Map, it indicates that the parcel is zone P C D with a corridor overlay, with the surrounding parcels also zoned as P C D and across the road to the north as P I D. This is the future land use map. The subject parcel is designated as commercial, with the surrounding parcels also as commercial and then further north as industrial. This is the aerial photograph taken in two thousand and twenty-two. It shows the parcel is currently developed with an existing structure. And the concept plan submitted by the applicant outlines the location of the existing building and a proposed building. If the special use is approved, both would be used for the use. The planning commission public hearing was held on August fifth, two thousand and twenty-five. No citizen spoke for or against the project. After closing the public hearing, the planning commission held a brief discussion and recommended approval of special use application S U twenty-five dash zero 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 nine with staff conditions by a vote of six to zero. And the planning staff has recommended the following conditions. One, general conformance with the concept plan and conformance with all ordinance standards is required for site plan approval. Any changes to the layout of the site that will result in increased impacts to adjoining properties or uses shall require approval of an amended special use permit. And two, lighting if used shall be the minimum required for safety and security and shall be directed downward and away from adjacent properties and roadwayways. And that concludes the staff presentation. Are there any questions from the planning perspective?
Any questions? Comments?
I mean, it's a, I mean, it's a great idea. It's in a good location. And that area, as all areas do, need a good mechanic to work on their automobiles.
Okay, thank you, Appio. Any citizens here that want to comment on this? Or against? Applicant?
Good evening. I'm here representing Mr. Eddie Dooley with the special use permit application. He is basically looking just to construct the additional building and use the two facilities for repair of the personal equipment and not generally open to the public. So it's more or less a self-service shop for his, for his operations. Previous leases have done something similar, so we don't feel it's an extreme change of use. But if there's any questions?
Yes, I have a question. He's doing it just for himself. Why does he have to go through this process?
From what I understand is we have to establish a land use for the property.
The definition for a, for this use does not specify that it has to be a commercial use. It's just simply the repair of vehicles in general. Private or public or open to the public would trigger the need for this, this hearing process.
If he's, if he's open to the public or even if he's not open to the public?
Correct, yeah. From what he's asking to do in our ordinance chess.
But we, if we approve this, he can, he can public. I mean.
We didn't prohibit it as far as the conditions go, so correct. Yeah. He wants to do it privately, but technically it could be open to the public in the future if it were to change hands or something of that nature, yes.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Any citizens here that would like to speak to this? Okay, seeing none?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If there's no further discussion, I move that we would approve resolution R zero nine zero nine two five dash zero four.
Second. Do you have a second? Someone said?
I did.
Okay. Mr. Davis made the motion. Mr. Tuck, second it. Roll call, vote, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Bainsley?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. Thank you. Next, we have a consideration of approving a text amendment application. E eight two five dash zero 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 three. Amendments to zoning ordinance in section thirty twenty-two-two, and this will be presented by Jordan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you mentioned, this is text amendment application two five dash zero 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 three. It pertains to zoning ordinance amendments related to civil penalties. Just to kind of give some background on this particular request, the application was initiated by the Board of Supervisors on July twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. The proposed amendment will allow for the zoning administrator or their designated staff to collect payment for zoning fines before a code case will be heard in court, basically a prepayment option. And this amendment should resolve minor violations or continuous violations in a more efficient manner. Planning Commission did hold a public hearing for these text amendments on September second, two thousand and twenty-five. We did not have a citizen speak for or against the application. And the Planning Commission did recommend approval of the text amendments by a vote of seven to zero to the Board of Supervisors. Do you have any questions I can answer from a planning perspective? I do have the fines here if you want to refer back to having questions on the civil penalties. So essentially, the only change you have here is we amended section A to comply with the Code of Virginia, which says that you can note, I think we had a minimum fine established of twenty-five dollars. Here, it just says no more than two hundred and fifty dollars. And really, D, E, F, and G are just simply the addition of being able to add prepayment penalty or prepayment option in order to avoid going to court to resolve the matter.
Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, we have any citizens who would like to comment on this? Seeing none, close the citizen comment period. Any discussion or? Motion?
Mr. Chairman, if there is no further discussion, I'd move for the adoption of ordinance zero nine zero nine two five dash oh five.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tuck, second by Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yep.
Chair votes yes. Motion carries. Next, we have a consideration of approving text amendments to the County Code, Chapter seven. Ordinance oh zero nine zero nine two five oh six. And this is presented by Jordan again.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is County Code, Chapter five, proposed amendments to Article two and number three. Want to start off by saying that I did run these, some of these amendments by the I T department to make sure that we were working together because our departments overlap when it comes to geographic information systems and the requirements for each department. I'll kind of go through a little brief amendment summary here, but then it's an Article two, street naming and signage. This, the proposed amendments are going to clarify that the Department of Information and Technology is a designated agency for administering the provisions of that article. It will also specify that the Division of Planning is responsible for ordering new and/or replacement street signs. It'll also clarify that a petition to change and approve street name shall be submitted to the county attorney's office. And Article three, derelict and blighted structures, there's an update to the language in the Code of Virginia. In accordance, we want to bring this into your code as well. That will ensure compliance with the recent amount of Code of Virginia, as mentioned, referencing fifteen point two nine eight nine five eight point one one. And of course, the civil penalties limitations basically with that. The statutory reference for this potential enforcement remedy for addressing derelict or blighted structures. Simply just another option for the, for the board to be able to recoup costs or to apply penalties for those who have not complied with our blighted structural ordinance once we've sent notification out. If you have any questions on any of the specific sections, I do have slides after the question slides here. If you have anyone in particular you want to hone in on, other than that, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them for you.
Any questions?
Want to clarify which ordinance we're looking at because all that was the oh seven document, not the oh six. So we are on oh.
You're on oh seven, I think we jumped over oh six.
Questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any citizens here that have any comments? Okay, hearing none? Any discussion or a motion?
Chair, I'll make a motion we approve ordinance number zero oh nine oh nine two five dash zero seven.
Second.
Okay, got a motion by Mr. Johnson, a second by Mr. Tuck. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck, yes. Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next, we have a consideration of ordinance approving text amendment to the County Code, Chapter five, building and development regulations.
We already, that's the one we just did, I think you, I have to go back to.
Yeah, I think they were out of order.
They were out of order.
Oh, you're on chapter seven of this stuff. Sorry about that. But where are we at?
See.
Because I thought I said chapter seven when I.
You did.
Opened it up. They were, they were reversed when they. Okay. So we're on chapter seven now.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's better than chapter eleven.
As you mentioned, Mr. Chairman, County Code, Chapter seven, this is the Environmental Code, proposed amendments to this particular section. I'll kind of give a brief amendment summary here, and I'll also have a couple of slides of some of the portions of that that I wanted to bring light to as far as bringing to the presentation. I do have all the other text amendments that are part of these changes also after the question slides. If you have a question on one of those, happy to answer it for you. Of course, kind of summarizing the amendments, minor revision to section seven point one and seven three to support ordinance implementation. The inclusion, the inclusion of the requirement at the discretion of the administrator for an agricultural affidavit to qualify for exemption from stormwater permitting requirements. The addition of stormwater management facility, best managing practices, inspection frequency table applicable to facilities covered a recorded, under a recorded stormwater maintenance agreement and maintained by the property owner. Last one here, last two, new requirements that the development must reach a final grade and demonstrate adequate stabilization of disturbed area prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy and the updated enforcement procedures, including clarification on the issuance of a stop work order, email notifications, and the imposition of civil penalties once violations reach the notice to comply stage of enforcement. So I'll kind of go through some of the ones that I think that, that were more important and more impactful to those that are getting permits with our office. Clearly, one of the most common things that we do get when we go, come up on a site where someone has started disturbing without a permit is that they are doing it for agricultural purposes at the discretion of the administrator. We will probably likely require that they fill out that affidavit. It's just to show that they are in fact doing that in order to be able to avoid the need to get a permit for that. So I wanted to add that in here so that we had something on file in case the Department of Environmental Quality did contact us about that and about the operation, we could produce that document and say it's an agricultural disturbance. And here is the affidavit to show that. So monitoring and inspection, this is the one related to final grade. So F, it shall be required that all developments shall have achieved final grade and adequate stabilization of the permitted disturbed areas prior to the issuance of certificate of occupancy. If weather or extenuating circumstances prevent attainment of the final grade and/or stabilization per section thirty dash ten of Bedford County zoning ordinance, a temporary C O may be granted until such time the owner or the person responsible for carrying out the plan can achieve final stabilization. I do believe the ordinance that is in your packet is missing the word may, it still has the word shall. I think there's a sharp ask that we change that when we, when initiated these text amendments, so that's my fault. Just wanted to bring that to your attention, that I'll correct that and get that to Bridget. And of course, this is the enforcement stage of, of the additions to the ordinance. So it requires that at the posting, all zoning and building permits will be temporarily suspended and no inspections will be provided for the project. This is related to stop work orders. A maximum period of seven days after the receipt of the order shall be allowed to correct the violation upon completion of the corrective actions and issuance of a, of a land disturbing permit. If so required, the stop work order is rescinded and the zoning and building can be reinstated. So essentially, right now, the way our stop work orders work is that the stop worker only stops the erosion and sediment control activities on site. However, with this new change, and it was in our old ordinance before we implemented this one the summer before last, that we wanted to stop all activities on site to prompt them to be able to expedite the corrections they need to make. By the way, stop work order is like what, the third phase or fourth phase, I believe, of our enforcement progress? There's many weeks have gone by where we've sent normal notifications for that. So that's really like a last resort to bring the site into compliance. And of course, the addition here of section seven dash nineteen, which is penalties injunction to other legal actions. This will establish fines, as mentioned in the executive summary. Those fines will be much like the zoning fines that we just discussed. There will be a prepayment option for those. And of course, if they desire to have their day in court prior to paying those fines, they may do so, and we would collect the fines after court should we prevail in that proceeding. Have any questions or I can help you with?
Did, did you guys write all this stuff or some of this coming from the feds?
Which one? The ordinance that we adopted actually was the model ordinance that came from D E Q, which was modeled after the Code of Virginia, which indeed comes down from the EPA. So a lot of the things that we have in there, as you mentioned, the, the concrete washout and so forth, are things that are determined to be a pollutant per the Department of Environmental Quality. And thus, since we implement that program, we are required to cite folks on site for, for doing, for having that washout on site.
Maybe you guys could send him a note about common sense.
Noted.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, any citizens have any comments? Hearing none? I will open it up for discussion amongst the board or a motion.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further discussion, I'd move for the adoption of ordinance zero nine zero nine two five dash zero six.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Tuck, a second by Mr. Davis. Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. All right, next, we have consideration of a resolution authorizing a supplemental appropriation from the Transit Occupants Act. That's going to be presented by Nicole Johnson.
Good evening, supervisors. So I'm here to request your approval for funding to support a bid for the two thousand and twenty-eight P D G A Professional Masters Disc Golf World Championships. Should Bedford County be awarded, our financial obligation would be twenty thousand dollars with City of Lynchburg contributing the other half. Bids are due by October first, and the award announcements are expected in January. Bedford County would only be financially responsible if awarded the bid. Organizers anticipate around one thousand competitors and over four thousand spectators to the event, which would again bring national attention to Bedford and contribute economically to the community. Thank you for your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
I got a question.
Okay.
Are we going to get any consideration when it comes to recognizing Bedford County being a part of this project?
Yeah, Bedford County is listed.
I saw.
In the two thousand and twenty-six.
I saw something already where the news made it out to be like this was a Lynchburg project.
So I think they picked up Lynchburg's press release. Right, Shelley, I'm gonna, we have our press release too, but Lynchburg's went out like immediately. And we were like right behind that, and I think some of the media just picked up Lynchburg's and failed to mention Bedford in that media.
Contact them then and let them know this is a.
Go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, if Lynchburg wants all the credit, then they can reimburse us for the half of the money that we put up for.
Bedford County was mentioned in their press release to give them credit, but the quotes were definitely from their officials, and it leaned a little more Lynchburg, so yeah, that would be my take.
The television one I saw never mentioned, they said Forest.
Yeah.
But they never said Bedford County.
Okay, so yeah. Since that time, I've been connected directly with Disc Golf, G G P T, Disc Golf Pro Tour marketing team, along with Lynchburg's marketing team, so we're all gonna work together. And I've, I've already called them out on a couple of things, like wherever it says Lynchburg, I'm like, I actually pointed out specifically on their website places that it lists at Lynchburg without Bedford County that had been up for a while. I said, you need to please fix that, Bedford County slash Lynchburg. Anywhere Lynchburg's mentioned, because it's both of us equally.
That's right.
So, yeah.
Yeah, maybe on the, maybe on the logo or whatever tournament it is, they could have, you know, the two courses named, right? Because it just seems like, you know, we got slighted previously.
Right.
This time, we put up half the money and, and it seems like we're still getting slighted. And that was the part that we're like, wait a second. You know, that we have, we have some skin in the game, we should definitely get a little credit.
Yeah.
They frame it to be Lynchburg and not Bedford.
Okay. No, I totally understand. And I'm actually doing an interview with Channel Seven Friday morning, which I think will be, Shelley set that up? And I think that would be a good one. I think that will get a lot of eyes and ears on it as well. But again, we want attention outside of Bedford, because we want the people to come and know that they are in Bedford County, not in Lynchburg. So I realize that's super important. That's why we're doing it, so.
Well, I think it, to me, it doesn't bode well or begin well if the way Lynchburg has already stepped forward, you know, with their promotion by sliding Bedford in their mentions. I mean, I, I can understand them wanting to, to get a lot of attention for it, but at the same time, in, in the interest of a, of a good relationship, which leads to a good end in a project like this, you know, win-win is, is a great way to work. And if, if we have to be concerned about one of our partners and we're, Bedford County is providing the site for this, correct?
Correct.
And we're putting up half the money. And at, at the very least, we shouldn't have to be concerned about the marketing of it.
Okay. I understand.
All right, any other questions? Mr. Chair, just.
I mean, quite honestly, why do we even need to be partnered with Lynchburg in this? Because we could do the whole thing ourselves and forget Lynchburg.
It's honestly because of the hotel rooms. There needs to be a certain number of hotel rooms for, I do.
I mean, there's hotels in Lynchburg, there's hotels in Orange, there's hotels in Bedford.
Yeah, I agree. And when they came for the Worlds, they stayed all over as, as far as Appomattox even, so.
And Appomattox didn't advertise. I, I'm, I'm, I'm opposed to, to even sharing in this with Lynchburg. I'll say that right now.
Sometimes, I think Lynchburg brought us to the dance rather than us bringing Lynchburg to the dance.
Well, we built the disc golf course.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, we do have the attraction.
I don't know, I think you guys, you filled out the. I think you filled out.
There was so much Kenny Palmer.
I think the first year, the first time this happened, Lynchburg put up all the money. But to everybody else's point, it was still played on the Bedford County course. But because they put up all the money and a variety of other things, Lynchburg did get the bulk of the credit. Since then, like the tournaments that'll be this October, I know the logos for those tournaments definitely have Lynchburg and Bedford County listed on the logos. And I think there's a little bit more equity of recognition going forward. But, but that, but that first tournament, it was definitely heavy leaning Lynchburg.
The deeper and deeper in these tournaments, the more contacts Bedford County has with the organizations. If it's a little more clout, then we head in that first.
Agree. And yeah, the contacts again with D G P T are new. So that's a new relationship that I'm gonna have, and I think that'll be very helpful.
I think after a couple more, it might be the Bedford.
I'll just say one more thing. If, if I erase it, Road Atlanta, you know, Road Atlanta is, is the event, it's the place. And then on their website, they advertise where you can find a hotel room.
Any other questions? Did you have some or you already said?
I think what I said was what was on my mind, so.
But this is for a future one that we haven't been awarded yet.
Correct, yes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Since we've already discussed it, do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve whatever number that is.
Second.
All right.
Oh, wait.
Motion was made by Mrs. Bainsley, second by Mr. Johnson. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
No.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. Next, we have a resolution authorizing the advertisement replacement of the Bedford County Administration Fire Alarm System, presented by Doug Kaufman.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Tonight, I ask for your consideration of a resolution to replace the fire alarm here in this building here. The existing fire alarm dates back to the last renovation of this building in nineteen ninety. It has lived a useful life, but is, that is now coming quickly to an end. And we need to go ahead and replace it just as a, a matter of staying with the times and keeping a operational and safe environment for the workers here. We have budgeted a hundred thousand dollars in our C I P for this, and this resolution would authorize us to advertise for bids and also to award to the successful bidder if within budget.
Any questions? I have one.
Yes, sir.
How did you determine that what we have now is not adequate?
Because it is starting to not dial out at certain intervals when it is required to do so. So we're having to kind of continually fix it. And it's just because the circuitry is old.
Is it, it would be a stupid question probably, but would, it wouldn't make sense to repair the circuitry or replace?
They don't even make stuff like that anymore. It is, it is very outdated as far as the technology goes.
Nineteen ninety's not that long ago, Doug.
I didn't think so either, but you know, I remember it.
Computer-wise, it is.
Any other questions? Any discussion? For a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move for the adoption of resolution R zero nine zero nine two five dash oh nine.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Tuck, second by Mr. Davis, Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Tuck?
Yes.
Ms. Bainsley?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion carries. No board committee reports, board comments? Hearing none?
Chair, I would just like to say that we continue to see a lot of use out of those pick of all courts over there. Lot of use and a lot of, a lot of favorable comments. Good move.
Okay. Davis?
How content.
I would just say that our Parkin Rec has done a great job this summer using our parks. I was there Friday night at the event they had for First Fridays, and this Saturday, they're doing the Bee Festival. So just major kudos to.
Don't say nothing about bees.
Don't let them bees get out of line.
Who's gonna keep the bees in line?
Keep the bees in line, give them some water.
Okay, county administrator report?
I don't have anything unless Justin or D W have anything. I guess nothing this evening, Mr. Chair.
No appointments for tonight, county attorney report?
Nothing further at this time, Mr. Chair.
Board information? Nothing there. Calendar? Everybody can read that, can't they?
Yeah, next meeting is September twenty-third, seven o'clock, five o'clock work session.
That's still taking.
Okay. Next, next.
I vote we adjourn. Make a motion, we adjourn, Mr. Chair.
Motion from Bob to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Bainsley, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.